The United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
In the meantime, I will ask that, look, is there any adjustments to the agenda?
I have one.
We have a phone call arranged with Dale Urban and Carolyn Coward to discuss something about urgent care, urgent emergency account. And so we need to go into a closed session at 6:30. So I don't know where that's going to come in on this agenda, but that's the time slot that they have written the call at 6:30.
Thank you. All right. Any other amendments to the agenda? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda then.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? And I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes for the workshop and regular meetings of December the 21st, official meeting of December the 10th, 2021, January the 2nd, 2022, and the emergency meeting on January 10th.
So, move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Minutes approved. Okay. Now we'll ask Amy. You will speak again, please.
Can you pull up that second probably?
Go over the getting.
No, please, it's a separate one.
Yeah, I'm not sure which one it is.
Well, you just heard a little bit about what we do. But I'm Amy Cornell, I'm a land conservation manager with Main Spring Conservation Trust. Main Spring works to conserve the waters, forests, farms, and cultural heritage of the upper Little Tennessee and Hawa'i River Valley watershed. We started in 1997, oh, 1997, formed the N'Kwasi Land Trust. In 2012, we merged with the Little Tennessee Water Plant Association as a land trust for Little Tennessee. And then in 2016, we changed our name to Main Spring Conservation Trust to better reflect our service area, which is, there we go, the six most western counties in North Carolina and a portion of Grayden County. We are an accredited land trust, sorry for flipping around, that makes the land trust alliance has recognized our practices and our standards, and they support that. We rely on them for advice and protocols, and they trust us to conserve land well here in North Carolina. We work to conserve land primarily with willing land donors to develop conservation agreements to protect their land indefinitely. We also work with federal and state and entities and municipalities like Graham County to purchase land and conserve it and manage it indefinitely as well. Our core areas that we work are program areas or water, land, and cultural heritage. So the Little Tennessee and the Hawa'i River watershed, that's our defined focus area or service area, excuse me. We work to conserve forest land and farmland alike, and then we also work really closely with the Eastern Band Cherokee Indians to protect their cultural heritage and partner with them to preserve that. We work to conserve land, to restore stream and riverbanks, to educate the youth and adults, to educate everyone in our service area, to remediate brownfields and restore and protect cultural heritage. This is our service area. This is a map that's a few years old, but each of those red or orange dots with a project that we completed could be a conservation easement, or a transfer to the Forest Service or the Wildlife Resources Commission, or the town of Murphy watershed is a conservation heritage that we help them to conserve. These are our different focus areas, which are defined by a lot of factors, including, you know, a lack of conserved land, forest land, prime agricultural soils, threatened endangered species, climate resiliency. So we focus a lot of our time in conserving land in these areas, but are bound by our service area as a whole. So although Graham County is not covered by a focus area, we're excited to work here. And you can see there are several properties that we own or conservation easements that we hold and monitor in Graham County. A cultural heritage focused area of ours is the cultural corridor that stretches from Brighton City down through Franklin and follows to Little Tennessee. So go through, you know, Gidua, N'Kwasi, Watauga, Cowee. We work to create kiosks like this and conserve mounds and areas of special interest to transfer to the tribe and work really closely with them to identify this area as a special interest. Some properties that we, several properties that we own are open to the public, and we manage trail networks and host events there. Several of our really popular properties like this include the Tesson Tea Bottomland Preserve, Gibson Bottoms, Clean Branch, which we actually just finished on a really, it's a very accessible trail. It's, we can't say it's ADA compliant, but it is, it's a trail for all. Cowee View, which you can see that the Cowee mound, our Welch Farm in Cherokee County, and our newest one, where it's really excited to open up to the public is our Onion Mountain Preserve in the Eliot River watershed. So if we zoom in on our projects in Graham County, like I mentioned, there are a few that we own. Those are the darker ones. There's Tean Meadows in the west and Seven Springs Branch, and then Simp Gap, more in eastern part of the county. And then the remainder of those other four projects are conservation easements that we hold. Most easements that we hold are indefinite. Some, like the North Carolina Wayans Reparian CE, that conservation easement is not indefinite, but we do work to conserve one permanently. There are lots of ways that our volunteers help us and landowners can get involved in conserving the property. You can donate to Main Spring, you can volunteer at many of our events. You can steward your land well and speak up for clean water and good land management. I think that's the most important. We work with willing landowners to conserve their property, but everyone can be a good steward of your land, whether, you know, it's a public land, you can treat well, or your own property that take care of. We have a great conservation outreach associate, her name is Rachel Newcomb, this is her information. If any of you all have any questions, or any commissioners have any follow-up questions, I also have my contact information available, but she can point you in the right direction. I want to go back to our Graham County slide real quick here, but I live in Franklin, and I am sad to say that I don't make it out to Graham County as much as I wish I could, but really do love being partnered with you all and, you know, make efforts to outreach to Graham County folks and are conscious of the fact that much of your county is in public land. We work to work with private landowners to conserve their land on a willing basis, but anyway, all that being said, Graham County is a natural scenic destination. We hope that we're helping you guys preserve that and build upon that. So, do you all have any questions?
Good.
Yep. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your call. Does anyone in the audience have any questions for Amy? Okay. All right. Next on our agenda is, on the heel, the Senator Director.
Hey, everybody. We just got notification we're going to get some more block grant funds, an amount of $5,238. The county match on that is $582. I just want to bless it to apply. And I need signatures. You choose to, let me apply.
Move.
Second. All in favor? We need approval for the amendment.
Yeah. I thought I got an email yesterday about our ARPA grant that we talked about with the commission, I guess, six months ago about a contract. You also have that for signatures. It's a two-year grant for fiscal year 2023 and 2024, and the total was $33,453. I need your blessing to apply.
A little wish made of how should we do it for that one?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
I doubt.
Thanks.
Ash Bryan Stevens?
Good evening. Just a little, I guess, a request. As you all know, we have changed some shifts up at EMS. We now have a shift supervisor on every shift that's going out and responding with the crews. However, we've noticed a deficiency. They are currently using a F-550 flatbed truck as a quick response vehicle, which it's not very quick, it's not very responsive, and it's actually was tasked in the beginning as being an emergency management vehicle to pull head gloves with, which is what it's suited for. Done a little bit of research and a little bit of talking with the finance officer, we have budgeted in our current budget quite a bit of capital outlay in hopes of being able to buy an ambulance. With talking with the ambulance vendors, we need to probably go ahead and expect that out before too much longer. However, they're quoting us at least a two-year backlog before we will be able to buy a truck chassis to build the ambulance on. With that being said, I would like to be able to use some of that capital outlay to purchase a quick response vehicle for the shift supervisors. I've laid out a couple of different options. One is the lease option that we worked through the enterprise that we, is the enterprise that we leased the sheriff's office vehicles through. It's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $500 a month, but that doesn't include any outfitting or anything, and we have to turn it back in at the end of the lease. I don't foresee it getting the mileage that sheriff's office vehicles get. I would imagine, you know, 200, 300 miles a week would be a lot, because it's only going to be used to, for the shift supervisors to take out home calls and occasionally for them to go to training or something. With that being said, the vehicle, the lifespan, it would probably be more than the lifespan of the lease, so we talked and it'd be more economical just to purchase something. I got a quote on a new vehicle, a new Ford Explorer. It's 44.5. However, they have at least a 40-week lead time. So I went back and talked with Collins Auto Sales here in town. We looked at several different options through their vendors and through the auction site that they use. So looking at the availability of used vehicles, we're looking at possibly purchasing a used SUV, and with the allowance of $35,000 for the SUV, and he said it would be very low mileage and very new, so mid-teens to, you know, thousands of miles instead of, you know, something new, but however, it's going to last us quite a while. And from the figures I've got for the outfit and the radio, the lights and everything that's going to be required from the state, I would like to be able to transfer part of that capital outlay in the sum of no more than $42,500 to accomplish this project. $42,500. That would be completely outfitted and on the road, and it quite possibly could come in less than that, just allowing some incidentals for some things that might have to be included from the state. They're trying to get back with me on whether or not it requires a locked box in the back, and that'll run, you know, vending price somewhere around the $1,500 or so for all the drugs and stuff that have to be carried in, that have to be secured. The question was whether it had to be climate controlled or not. So if we're able to park it inside, we think not. That's why I put a little extra in the request. That would be the maximum amount, and of course, if we come in under that, we'll return it back to the capital outlay and it goes in back.
I got a question about that truck. What year was it? The truck you were talking about?
2019. It's a 2019, I believe.
Oh, yeah, I remember somehow. Did you keep that in mind?
Yes.
It was sent here and pulled up, they interratered.
It was actually, you didn't want to say this on stage.
They screwed famous.
It was provided through the domestic preparedness region, NCC, through emergency management, so we were obligated to.
How many counties, any one state, I guess, if they called in requesting that?
It is a deployable resource, so that means that any county in the state can call and request it for us to bring it and use it, or they can use it until they get done with it.
Well, we budgeted to buy ambulance, didn't we?
We did, yes.
Doesn't sound like we're going to bother you.
There's going to be a lot of room in that budget because of that, so, you know, and I agree with Brian when he looked at it, that it's just better to purchase something low miles, let somebody else take the depreciation on it, and then that way he can use it for probably a big 10 years.
Sounds like a win-win. Any further discussion from the board? Okay.
You want to do an action for better than maybe that on my desk?
It's, capital outlays are already dedicated, so if you are just with just making the purchase, how are you up for that?
Director.
Correct. Can I make the purchase?
Just the director. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you. Right. Any public comment? Okay. We do not have a public comment, so we will move to Jason Moreno or Yana Rose for your report.
Thank you, Chair. We're fitting. And everybody, I'll put down my list here, keeping in mind, too, we only have to stop just in case if I don't get all the way through at 6:30, we will have a call going to a closed session. I'll start at the top of the list. As the commissioners know, we have appropriated the $5 million grant. It's called SIFRA, State Capital and Infrastructure Fund Grant, to accompany the money that it will take to go towards New Justice Center. That process has been underway. It was a process of providing five different documents, two documents at a time when we provided them, they came back and asked for the final one. I didn't list them here because we've gone through to now waiting on the contract. So all we're waiting on right now from the state is for them to provide the contract that we'll provide to the commissioners to sign, to look over, and then they will, that's the last portion of that grant that we will go through to for them to provide the money. And then I think my finance officer's talked about a separate account for that grant. And we'll talk a little bit more about the New Justice Center package that I have also provided on the project when I go over my project plan. Moving on to item two, I'm going to go over a little bit of the crossover roads, transportation, and just touch on the forest plan. I'm just myself learning a lot about this. It's very interesting, intriguing, and extremely complicated, and I know Mr. Weir is here. He may even be able to make some comments after I get done, and I'm sure Commissioner Wiggins might as well. As most of you know, Commissioner Wiggins and I met with the US Forest Service yesterday to get an update on the crossover roads project, specifically to the transportation aspect. The roads or prisms could be the biggest controversy with the environmentalist, conservationists are concerned, as everybody knows about roads and disturbing the woods and the areas where we live. The US Forest Service estimates about 11 miles of temporary roads within about 16,000 acres will be needed with only approximately about three miles of that being actually cut into new roads. The area proposed includes about 13 acres of management and harvest. There have been some questions raised about old growth in some stands that the US Forest Service has selected for management and harvest by environmentalists and conservators, conservationists groups that the US Forest Service is disputing, so they are not ready to drop those areas out of the plan yet. A March field review of specific areas will be scheduled with the county officials inviting to attend. The US Forest Service expects a spring, late spring release of the environmental analysis for notice and comment, and will be open for those comments for 45 days. The crossover roads project could take approximately 10 years to implement. I'll do a little bit of a brief discussion of forest plan, or that was conducted, and I've provided the information. If you look on, under my report document, there's three different documents and a map of the forest plan. It's the revisions from January 2022. I know there's a lot to go over, so I wanted to provide this to you, and then at some point, if we want to put together some more people, sit down and talk and go over it a little bit further, we can certainly do that. But I know you guys have had a lot of questions about the forest service.
How much longer is our comment period?
March 21st.
We got to get something together before then.
And there are common objections, if you want to file an objection to it, and it's a very complicated process in order to do that, but I have the information. I had an email to me today, and I'll get that out to everybody by how we're going to do it. So. Any questions on that? Mr. Weir, you have anything you want to add to that forest plan at all?
Well, I don't know what else you're going to say. The time to make an objection is not only the timing, but also who to make the objection and very clearly spell out whether they adhere to that or not. But I think the idea of forming a group amongst whoever is interested to combat what they intend, which is trying to bake more wilderness and poor utility for the forest here in Graham County, and maybe it'd be worthwhile to talk to other counties, especially Swain and Cherokee, since they were probably equally impacted. And it's very convoluted, what they say, how they say it, and if you can put all that together, you're doing a wonderful job. I'd love to help out the county, that's my interest. I think also if you were proactive and said, you know, if we could create an area for elk out on Huckleberry and Oak Knob and Little Huckleberry, which they are now turning, want to turn into ecological interest and natural type thing, which will probably take it away from that, and then maybe even talk about having an off-road area here in the county, give them something to think about, but that would be a great benefit to this county if you could do that. So anyway, that's until I know more what you're going to say in the future.
Well, that's going to be my extent, basically, other than we want to see what Commissioner Wiggins has, he's going to get it out to everyone on the board for that same thing that you talked about for objections, and that'll be where we'll start. And I'm sure the commissioner of amendments will want to be involved, and then we'll talk to them, and then we can get in touch with you after we figure out which route we want to go. All right?
Do we have a number or an approximate number of the additional acres shown as going into wilderness in this new land? Do you have that, Dale?
They told us map. It is the map, and then they, there's a change.
If you look at the document itself, it's still the original grant, so it has all the areas that they originally put into the plan, but the Forest Service went, they chose alternative E, so if you want to pull that plan up and go through alternative E, it will be explained to be about, actually, what their intentions are. The map shows the areas that they definitely are going to include. And that's going to be the big wilderness study area section down at the head of Yalla Hamma Branch watershed section on Deep Creek, and then another section from AV Branch, I think, back down to Deep Creek somewhere there. I really can't see the map very well right now, but part of it that they're including was has had what's called a roadless area designation for a number of years, and it's already being managed, basically as a wilderness, no activity in roadless areas whatsoever. So that's what they included, is those three areas, at least to my knowledge right now. There's nothing else.
And I think they said what it shows on here is about 66,400 acres designated as wilderness, and then they've got 265,000 of that is designated old growth. They added about 65,000 from the last study, so that kind of raised our concerns when we're sitting there to listen to that. Out of 1.1 million acres, that's about 25%.
It is, and it's raising eyebrows all over the county. I'm getting a lot of negative feedback. I think if I recall the discussion, what the board agreed to was some property on snowbirds, is that right, Pete? As going into wilderness and I didn't, page 12 of that plan is what I understood, so.
We actually said just leave it like it is, because it's basically wilderness now, it's still there.
Oh, yeah.
But probably more restricted to wilderness, if you're in the study area park.
And about how many acres was that? When did that happen?
The 65,000 acres that he refers to is all across the Pinstripes and the Manahale Forest. It's not in Graydon County. Snowbirds well over, I'm going to say snowbirds, 7,500 acres plus or minus the areas to tie George Kilmer's Slipper up together.
But probably more restricted wilderness, if you're in the study area part.
And about how many acres was that?
The 65,000 acres that he refers to is all across the Pittsburgh and the Manahale Forest. It's not in gray area. Snowbirds well over, I'm going to say snowbirds, 7,500 acres plus or minus. The areas to tie George Kilmer's little rock together, those are about 6,000. The Yallowham and Branch Watershed, maybe 3,000.
Mr. Thompson, how many, the joint Fontana Village, is that the Deep Creek you were talking about?
Yeah.
What area is that?
Deep Creek's down here, I believe, with Goldman Branch, lake outside of the river going down towards the Poga.
So was there some consideration, like from a little Tennessee up to Fontana Village, to be added into wilderness in this plan?
One of their plans they had, I hope it wasn't long back.
Trailhead is Alexan Taitla now, it's basically the special interest area. You've got backcountry area. And the one thing that they all have in common for sure is they're not subject to timber harvest. I mean, this just sounds awful. This is just creative language to me. I don't know what the buffer would be on Santi Taitla for Wild and Scenic River. I'm sure it's restrictive.
I don't know. It used to be an acre mile, I think.
When you have inventory as a Wild and Scenic River, I'm not sure what that entails.
They've got various street regulations. The original, we had one pretty big, that's why I'm saying pretty heavy. I've got a good figure out about.
Or they say the chair of Haila's Scenic Byway. So I don't know what that buffer entails. I got this read.
Seated Byway.
I'm assuming that's what they've got, they've got the chair of Haila.
Yeah, that designation was on the chair of Haila Scotty in 1997.
What's that buffer? What's that buffer entail though?
The way it was said to me back in 1997 is, I don't know the exact details, but the way it was relayed to me is, no, no activity within sight. No noticeable activity within sight. So under that, if you're going to go over there and try to log it on Big Santi Taitla in places where you can see it, it requires, it's a different kind of management process. It's complicated.
Any more questions or discussion on the forest plan? The little crossover roads.
You referred to crossover as 13 acres. That's 1,300 acres of management?
Yeah.
Potentially on the Graham County part of. For anybody that doesn't know crossover, they get that name because part of it is in Graham, part of it is in Cherokee County. The whole area that too is around 23 to 2,400 acres. But there's a bunch of old growth designations up there that are just ridiculous.
If you're looking for the definition of each management area, that's what this is, directly copied and pasted. There's a lot more to each one, but this is a summary of what they plan. I'm going to give that to whoever or email to anybody.
Okay, that would be good. That it? Thanks.
One more thing, Keith. Tell me, Dale, or Jason, the 11 miles of temporary roads. The roads or prisms to, well, I know that could be a controversy, but we've got 11 miles of temporary roads with about 16,000 acres. Is that the acreage surrounding these 11 miles of roads?
The whole property area that they scoped out was 16,000 acres.
Yeah, within.
The 11 mile temporary road inside the area that they're actually going to be doing the activity on.
They're saying they need 16,000 acres.
They've scoped it out all the way from Topton to Cornsilk Branch.
Gotcha.
And then they narrowed it down to around 2,500 acres total.
So it is down from 16,000 to 2,500?
Well, that was the scoping area. They never intended to do 16,000 because they scoped it out to find the areas that they could actually do management activities in.
So now we're actually looking at 2,500 acres and three miles of new roads. Thank you. Jake, if anything more?
Thank you. A little brief discussion, an update on CDVG grants. Obviously with the COVID and all the other things, we haven't had a chance to meet face to face with Monica or Alice that have been working with both the revitalization CDVG grant and the coronavirus grant. We do have a meeting scheduled. We don't have a time yet. I think Ms. Wanda is gone. We will be doing a meeting on the coronavirus portion, which is the senior center on Thursday, to start seeing where we are. And we may discuss the other grants as well. But luckily with everything, how things are reducing and we see things opening up a little bit more, I see us getting a lot of push forward on these CDVG grants. Yeah, it's probably 626. I'll stop at item three. I think we'll have to, they're going to take a break prior to us. Did you have, Ms. Garland, did you have anything to add to CDVG at all?
Yeah, I reached out to the project administrator this afternoon to get a call in place on the neighborhood revitalization, which is the first grant, so that we can kind of regroup. I know she was working on procurement right before Christmas and then, oh, you know what, broke loose with COVID again. So hopefully we'll have a better update on in our project in interim, not next month, but we'll keep you posted via email.
So are we safe on extensions?
At this point, yes.
Yes, we are.
Okay, good, thank you.
I do anticipate though that we'll probably have to get another extension just because of all the waves. And I know the public is getting impatient. We have, we've had a call or two, but just, you know, be assured that the projects are ongoing. However, you know, Commerce pretty well closed down for over a year. North Carolina Department of Commerce, which handles all the grants. So they, and then they had all the CDVG money from the COVID money come in, and that became the priority. So we're short-staffed and stuff, but they are moving forward.
We will stop at item three and I'll answer. And I'll start afterwards. You all will have to go and make a mistake. Really impressed with the clarity. I think it's going to be a really, really big help to everything we do. Can also, it can also be used by 911 when they're tracking. They'll have access to this information for emergency calls, rescues, fire, EMS, and create for tax bases as well too, so.
Jason, I would mention, there's another safety feature there too. After Gallenburg burned down. If they had not had this type of benefit in place, they thought they would probably have lost 30 more lives.
Yeah.
They'd use this to start the ambulances or the cars or whatever to.
You're absolutely right.
They built on that and it was just incredible how many lives that saved.
Yeah, such a great point. It'll be able to see structures and be able to watch them properly and tell them where to go. Route left here, there. So a good resource for us, the county government. And we'll report that back when it's complete. And I would like to be able to, I can possibly present some imagery once we get everything done for you to see. I just wanted to, item seven, we're continuing. We tried at different times to do our safety walkthroughs after our department managed meeting. But obviously with COVID, it was kind of crazy to stay out. We wanted to stay out of people's faces. But we're going to make that happen irregardless, probably even if we had to go back to mass. We want to, we're making sure our places are safe for our people. And so I just wanted to make you aware, we're kicking back into high gear on those safety laws to all of the citizens. If you'd look, item seven, if you would look, I provided a section from our personnel policy. It's section 914. It's the adverse weather policy. And I'm asking if the commissioners would consider, and I'm thinking of all of our employees in this regard, the adverse weather policy, as you know, when we have to call, I'm communicating with the commissioners, I did with Chair Orr when we had the one day that we closed. If the policy reads, employees may take compensatory time, must be taken first if they have it, then annual leave vacation, then sick leave, then leave without pay if all leave has been exhausted. What I'm asking is if we call and say they can't come in, I'd like to switch those around and make it comp time first, be able to utilize their sick leave next possibly. I know we need to keep some sick leave.
Comp down first?
Comp time, and that's not changed. The comp time is there. I'm not asking to change that. I'd just like to switch the sick and the annual, let the annual, maybe let them try to keep that annual leave. It would be third in line. So take comp time, if you don't have comp time, you would take sick. And if you don't have sick, you would use annual. You know, wanted to see if the commissioners would be willing to consider that change in the policy.
I don't know why it was placed in this order to begin with, Kim. You've been around a while, do you know Becky?
It was way before, I think it was one of us was here.
Okay, Dale, where do you, and do you recall? Is there a strong valid reason why it was in this order instead of the other?
And that's what I'm asking, maybe there was, I'm just.
I can't think of any, but I'll ask Dale.
Why would we check? Just so to keep their annual leave, a lot of people don't have, aren't able to work comp time. They're restricted to that 40 hours a week. So there would be, if I'm sort of policy or issue, then they would automatically have annual, whereas they may, everybody gets 10 right amount of time. So we're not usually talking about a lot of times that would happen through winter. So it was a thing, the thought would be use your sick and then annual.
Just on mandatory closure. Not on if you choose not to come in.
No.
You would have to take your comp, annual, sick. This would just be if Manager Moreno calls in and says, we're closing for the day, then that would go comp, sick, and annual. Because it's not their choice to stay home.
Right.
It's the county call that you must stay home.
I don't know why we don't give them a choice to use whichever one they want. So those are two, a lot of, it's like a lot of sick leave, they use their annual. But if they want a annual, they use their sick.
Would that be difficult bookkeeping, accounting? No? If they chose whichever one they wanted?
Right, they would just make that notation like they always stay on their time sheet.
So I'd be fine with that.
You can go comp and then a choice after.
What do you think about that, Dale and Keith? Dale and/or Keith? Let them choose the one they want or?
Put the one and half and the other.
It's only going to apply on optional workday, right?
Yeah.
Well, no, just the mandatory. Just be when, you know, if there's a Monday, we had a big snow and we don't want people to risk getting out and be a mandatory closure. And that's why I was thinking, if a lot of them don't have comp, we don't want to work. I'm telling them they can't come to work or the, via the board. They, I didn't want them to have to take their vacation and use a sick day or a choice, like Commissioner Dale says would be fine too.
Yeah, because we may be working and then it starts snowing and then we get sent home. And a lot of people, like Sid, don't have a lot of the annual built up, like our newer employees. And they have sick, but they don't have any, you know, to take and they can't take it.
We'd give them the economy to choose the one best suited for their family lifestyle or their life.
On mandatory closures only.
I think the choices are easier when the sick leave is more restrictive. So they can land sick leave a lot more than they do in the early. Yeah.
And it's kind of at a level rate regardless of your longevity, whereas annual leave is based on, you know, your accrual grade is based on longevity. So like Kim was saying, those that haven't been here very long, it can really put a hurt on them, the balance. And it's not their choice.
Do you need to vote on that?
It'll be a change in the policy, yes. I'll be vote.
Okay. Before I ask for a motion, is there any other discussion? Okay. Then I will ask, is there a motion on mandatory closure days to allow the employee to choose the type of leave they want to use on that day?
All in agreement.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a good idea, thank you.
All right, moving on to item eight. Going to get into, this is going to be a issue, or no, I shouldn't say issue. This is good for the county, for the Grand County Maintenance Department. Currently, they maintain approximately 18 buildings. It really rolls down to about 30 something. Actually, when we talk about all the little softball dugouts and some of the other buildings that were required, you know, that we kind of keep up. And I put that as an example for the recreation fields behind the Health Department and DSS. And we'll soon be adding two additional buildings, which is the Recreation and Pen Sematary Grants Department buildings. So I don't know if we want to look at maybe a budget here, but I would like to request that commissioners consider adding a position in the maintenance department. And what I'd like to do would be to make that more specific to HVAC and refrigeration, where we have a more robust tracking system and annual monthly PMs on all our HVAC equipments, but also be there to help Scott hook it, because we will be taking on two more buildings when Recreation and Cemetery goes on. That would be able to build a program for facilities and also give Scott. It would also be a safety issue, really Scott should be kind of doing some of this stuff on his own at the end of the day. And so, I mean, I may need some help from Ms. Garland on that to make sure that we are good to go, but I do think it's going to be something we're going to need. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in close, other personnel have an idea to go along with that.
Is that something that could hold into a budget?
I guess that's a Ms. Garland question.
I just have a little bit of an idea. You have that person, give me about five minutes. And I'm here. I don't talk off the top of my head, but. I, well, I can tell you right now, that addition would come out of our public buildings and we're way, we are tracking way healthy in that budget. That budget, we ought to be at 42%, which is about 65% less than that budget. So I think the budget would support making that change currently, if that's the board's pleasure and Manager Moreno's recommendation.
We'll be discussing that bit in close. So if any of the commissioners feel like you need additional time to consider this, be thinking about that for when we discuss it in close, if you would please.
Okay. And then the last item would be Grand County IT Department. They have a, something that they've been working on, really think it looks good. We wanted to present to the board and the public. If you guys want to go over your website.
So to bring everybody up to speed.
Tim Sullivan and Abraham, this is Miller, if you're not familiar with our. Tim Sullivan and Abraham, this is Miller, if you're not familiar with our.
So bring everyone up to speed, you had outsourced this previously, and with Jason and Becky's directive, we brought this back into the county. Abraham has some, some talents and he's going to present it. Go ahead, Abraham.
Hello, guys. Please connect again. So basically, you guys, this is a structure backbone, what should be done in the next couple of weeks. I just have to gather more data from our each department, and as well for the minutes for each department and the forms. So basically. It's pretty small there, but that's the, we call, I call this landing page. So everything's there from what we have right now, so that people can still find what they're looking for. So for instance, for the commissioner, these, you guys, if you click this one, members, it'll, probably later on, I'll also need your pictures later on, so I can put your pictures right here. And then on the right side, you'll see some forms right there. So your minutes are getting scheduled, I'll also upload that. And for each county departments, so for instance, the Board of Elections, so kind of like put some graphics there so that people come and get the wall factor and enrich some what we have for each departments there. And for instance, as a word of elections, you can go to building inspections right there. So they have the forms right there on the right side, so I have to go, but all, what I did today, right now, I, I just copied whatever we had on the current website, and then as we go along, I'll update that, so in the baby steps, and then I'll go to each department, see what they suggest. And then if they, Abraham, change something here, so, so that's, so if we're going to go to the, for instance, register of bids, put some, mostly here, they go here for the prices, for the documents, records that you want, kind of like make it more, like a menu thing, you know, much easier for them to view it. And then, right now, it's still the current vibrance information there, so that, you know, I still leave it like that right now, but as we go along, as we sit down the road, I'll make some changes here, whatever you guys suggest to do. And so, right, so these are the backbone right now, mostly, these are the departments, county departments, so like sheriff. And mostly everything is still like finished now, about eighty percent. And so these are the EMS. And so basically, just black and white right here, just make it more easier. So basically, the big difference here from what we have right now, compared to this one, is more, a little bit more graphic, graphical, a little bit wall factor, so that people, you know, we can invite people to go to our website, so. So right now, if you, if you notice this, the Grand County, I put more details in that, the word Braha, just kind of combine whatever you can find here. And then if you scroll down a little bit here, you can see the pictures, you know, what we want to show, show to the tourists here, what we have, what we can bring. So, so this is the landing page, if some, if some people type, people type Grand County or this is what they see right away. So everything's right there, up on the top, Board of Commissioners, county departments, their information, and down the bottom, I still keep what we have, the code red, tasks, questions, jobs, and the rest of it. So, kind of like if you type this one, boom, everything's right there. So I just put some, a little bit of history here. So we're all, I'm almost done here, probably about eighty-five percent, and the next couple of weeks should be completed. And on the upper left, sir, I put the emblem there for Grand County, it's smaller than that, but yeah.
And that, front, your landing page, it scrolls too, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, looks good.
It's a lot neater.
But as we go along, any suggestions from you guys, commissioners? I would like the feedback down the road, yes.
And the different departments, if we do go with this and put it out there, each apartment can pick, you know, we put Jacob's space for inspections, he can have his big.
What I did to the Board of Commissioner's web, webpage here. You guys have your own silhouette here, I call this silhouette, but later on, you guys can just give me your picture.
If you want that, yeah.
But right now, it's still silhouette there.
Very good.
That's excellent, Abraham.
Oh, thanks, right.
That makes me very proud. That's, that's the best screen I've seen for Grand County yet.
I mean, but yeah, but the health team and Becky and Jason, yeah.
Very nice.
So almost two weeks, guys, it should be ready. Just uploading the, about eight hundred twenty minutes from the year two thousand thirty.
It definitely needs some updates.
You would be surprised how many people go back and look at our minutes, all the way back when we started posting them.
Those pictures would make me want to come here if I weren't already here.
Oh, yes.
You should put on there, it's already up down, it goes a hundred and fifty years old, it should.
Four hundred and fifty, so over. Make a note, sir.
Very good.
Probably one of the slides where you're.
You have a long time to follow. How was? Yeah. And I feel like it too.
Very good, thanks.
Thank you.
Any questions? City Project Management report? No, it looks good. So, no questions, I'll move on, I know it's getting late too. Yeah, thank you, very good. I'll, I'll put you a package for some project management stuff as well, it should be over to the left side of your table. I'll go over some projects quickly. RDA Moose Branch, we talked a little bit about it, it's about eighty-five percent done, complete, but it's on hold. They're waiting to, for paving, the asphalt and guard ground, a little bit of dress up, you know, happening in the spring, and we'll be included with that.
Looking really good. If you haven't driven over there, please do, look at the landscape, I'm very proud of it.
Yeah, I am too, it's really awesome. Yeah, it's good. Cemetery Department, and basically cemetery and rec is about the same, recreation's a little bit further along, the roof is on it, I don't think they put the ridge cap on, but there is a slight delay, one of the guys is sick, and I don't, I didn't really ask what, and they're from Weirville, so there's a little bit of delay, I expect them to be back next week. But that gives you kind of a, they're about sixty percent, once we get the middle building up, it'll be about sixty-five. Everything they're supposed to do, roughly sixty-five, sixty-seven, and then the, the one little bit of finishes that we do inside will be the complete, you know, be up to the commissioners again as we go forward with that facility. There'll be not a lot of finishes, obviously, in the warehouse portion of either building, but we will, we do want to do an office, we'd like to do a bathroom and an office, and a mechanical room, and of course the exercise room and the rec, front end of the rec. So I'll communicate a little bit more on that, once we see where our dollar figure is, we get to get a drive in. But it's really, really looking good, if you get a chance, again, I can bring some pictures, if you get a chance to look at those, it looks really good. Board of Elections, encourage you to walk through, it's about eighty percent, and Juanita's happy, so that's always a positive. We worked with her together on a lot of the finishes, all, basically, there's a little bit of flooring that's left to be put down, where we had to move these, as you notice, the big safes are gone, they're been moved in, we did that ahead of time, and floored around them, instead of having to worry about the floor underneath them, you know, for moving, those things are eight hundred pounds plus a piece probably. So ceilings in, flooring's down, plumber is looking at fixtures, so there's some trim out on the plumbing, some electrical switches to go in, and then we've got a little delay on some cabinetry, might take us out about another eight weeks possibly because of ordering, and that'll hold that, that'll hold that percentage. We're working with the Board of Elections on how they want to do, how they want to do that. I mean, I'd be willing, I have to work with inspections on how we did moving in and trying to be there ahead of time for the, what's coming up in May, but there won't be any cabinetry. So we've got to work that dynamic, again, we don't have the debt, we have not got the ordering on that, on the cabinetry, believe it or not, that's really the longest lead time for anything we've had to deal with, is to get the right kind of cabinetry, not a custom home cabinetry, but a office type, plastic laminate like they have up in our new facilities. There's a, there's a little bit of a lead time getting those, but it's looking really good.
It does.
I encourage you, if you have a chance, to take a walk through.
Flooring looks really good.
Yeah. And I, and I think they're going to like the room that they're going to have, and they'll be able to be capable to a lot of things. A lot more area for people to park out here, we'll put signage up, obviously, that's part of the contract, to put signage up, so it's marked well. ADA accessibility to the front, nice, we went with a forty-two inch front glass storefront door, really nice to, you look at it as well, so. We'll move forward with that. I've provided, so the next thing is, I've approached, if you'll look, here is the RFQ for the new justice center. Provided that, and I've approached some potential interested, we're not doing bids, this would be request for qualifications. I've approached several interested contractors, A and E, architecture, engineer, design teams that would be interested in providing us qualifications. But I want to make sure the commissioners are good to go with, we've been moving forward with this project, this might be something to talk about enclosed as well. But I also want to ask if, which commissioners, as we go forward with this, would like to be on that committee? We'll put a select committee, selection committee, once we get all these interested parties putting their package together based on what you see here, we'll do a selection from that as to who we want to start negotiating with on, on pricing. That's how we, we need to go forward with that. We're looking at this, I know you guys have talked about this before, we're looking at the construction manager at risk format to get this contract in place. A lot of, a lot of the engineers that I've talked to recommend that as a way to go with anything, it's maybe dollars or higher, is the, is the best vehicle to try to get your contract done. So is there any commissioner that would like to be a part of that selection committee, or, or the board in, as in general?
I would not like to be.
Not like to be, okay.
It's not by committee, Jason.
Commissioner Dale, is that like for you to be a part of that, if you would?
I would choose to volunteer.
With your background, and of course, any other commissioners?
I really think that we should probably try to bring in a consultant to, to help us work with, work with that, make sure that we are getting what we think we're getting.
Absolutely. There's a lot of people to talk to out there too, and I can, I can dig into that a little bit as well. I just want to make sure that you're aware of that, I want to tweak this just a hair, I want to look how we're going to be looking at their packages, that's the only thing I need to add to this package, is how, how we'll level, we'll weigh that, how we'll itemize that, and looking at what they provide pointwise. So the only thing I need to add to this document. And then we can talk about going out, moving further, and like Commissioner Lee had said, consulting. There are no questions? The number six, I've provided the middle school, sixth grade edition, that's currently showing at fifty-six percent complete. Once they got out of the ground, they've moved pretty well on that project. I try to tend to monthly update over there as well, to be on top of that. And then lastly, I spoke to our LDSI engineers that are doing the little, the snowbird, I emailed them today, I'm hoping to have a better grasp on where they are with the design, with all our, we've got our permits pretty much in place, I don't think there's, there wasn't another one left, I don't think permit on that. I think we had all our permits, more or less, but I'll verify that.
On the, on the.
Yeah, looks.
Yeah, I, I issued the permits last week.
Yeah.
And we're requesting, Commissioner Eller signed off, to request a, another extension into two items to get to work, and it took like a month longer than what I anticipated to get the permits.
Yep.
All of that, is that the permit to do the?
Work in the creek, basically.
Work in the creek, yeah. Work at the root.
It's all going to be one contract, yeah, it'll all be bids, it'll be bid as one contract. So the design will include the road stabilization and the larynx tag of the creek all the way out there.
And, yeah, but it was, the whole of it was Army Corps of Engineers.
Yeah, the permitting side.
You know what I'm saying.
And if there are no questions on projects, that is all I have.
I only have one. What is the plan to build that with the increase in taxes? And Becky asked me to ask this.
That's a joke.
Well, that, that is going to be the challenge probably of the century.
Yes.
And that's the reason why we're really where we are, where we are, is, you know, you're looking at a court order in a facility that, obviously, it's needed, but it might, it might put a burden on the taxpayer in this county.
We have to keep moving forward before we can get any hard numbers in place, so we might as well just.
Yeah, I mean, we've got some preliminaries from the original, remember, I still, we still have that program. The good thing about this is, with what I've worked with in the, in the construction world and talking to engineers, is you need that program to develop a, yours, to start working with an A and E firm, to start developing your actual plans for the project. So we've completed that, that was that step one, like we, we talked about, phase one. Now phase two is to go out and get qualifications for A and E firms and to, and to select one. Now with that, with that process, you can, can select an A and E firm to work with and start negotiating on price, if you don't have or have no agreement, you can go to the next one in your, in your pile that you, you've chosen from.
Always a positive note, we do have, I made you dollars, we didn't have.
That's right.
Four months ago.
That's right.
I know, Becky, we all like that.
That's all I've got. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to try to leave my money and talk really fast, for the sake of the board. So I've got quite a bit of really good news. One, one bit of good news, you just saw the new website, that, that saved the county nearly ten, but probably about ten thousand dollars. That's, that's a website that's on par with the travel tourism website, that's a little bit more, got no bells and whistles for the accommodation portion, and it costs us over twelve thousand dollars. So, so, you know, I'm really proud of the work that Abraham has done there. Our cash balance is the highest on record, it's in green, and I know the lighting is not real good in here, but our cash balance in the general fund was eleven million, three hundred sixty-six thousand, four hundred thirty-nine dollars at the end of January, so I'm real proud of that. Our capital projects, school capital projects in the American Rescue Act, I do need to transfer the money for those additional payments we made in December to the staff, so that will come out of that account into the general fund. Didn't get a chance to do that in January, because I had no staff, but anyway. If you look on page three, you'll see at the top of the page, this is our tax collections for the month of January, nine hundred sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred eighteen dollars. If you look across the page, you'll see that January last year was two point, almost two point four man, but this is the timing difference. Brookfield actually paid their taxes in December instead of January, so they paid a month earlier than normal, so it makes it look a little bit out of skew. And our DMV was a little over forty thousand, which is a little bit below this time last year, but pretty much on par with previous years. And again, that's timing differences. Page four, you'll see that our total collections for real. Page four, you'll see that our total collections for real current prior year are $6150,000. DMV's $363,000, so we have a positive variance in our real property taxes of $72,635, and just shot $15,000 in DMV. And our tax collection rate is tracking ahead of this time last year at 92.7. Last year was 91.75, so it's pretty much level, but it is tracking just a tad ahead. Page five, you'll notice that I forgot to change my color coding. If you'll look, for January, our revenues were 1.859 million. Our expenditures were a little over 1.3 million, so we had a surplus of $539,000. I also showed you December, revenues were a little over 3.8 million. Expenditures a little under 1.6 million for a surplus of 2.2 million. If you look on page six at the bottom of the page, you'll see that our year-to-date surplus is $2.751 million. We're about $36,000 ahead in our surplus, which I'm so proud of the county for that because we have spent a lot of money on capital projects and, you know, paid for some big-ticket items this fiscal year. And you'll see why we're tracking ahead on page seven. Our sales tax, some more record numbers in December. Or what we got in January for November was, this does not include the quarter cent, was $283,000. That's the highest I can remember ever seeing since I got here in 2009. And then we just got in a little less than $235,000, just the other day for our December numbers. So we are ahead of this time last year by $188,000 in sales tax revenue. So I'm really excited and pleased for that. We're tracking at a 14% increase in sales tax over this time last year. We have collected to date, since we started collecting the quarter cent, $642,000. And so I've got about a little over $53,000 that I need to transfer into our capital project fund with the Capital Management Trust. And if I get a minute this week or next, I'll get that taken through. Page eight is just your collections, or what you've got still outstanding in property taxes. And we continue to live those old balances down. I know Tawana has worked tirelessly on doing collection efforts and foreclosures. She's very dedicated to that. And page nine, you'll see what we've spent out. And that's the other reason that I'm just very thankful for the cash balance we have on our capital projects. Made the off just a little tad on the election board recreation and sanitary buildings, but it's very minor, just some things that Jason and I need to reconcile. We've spent out $652,000 on the school project. That's our match. So since we started those two projects, we've spent out nearly a million dollars on those capital projects. And the middle school project, now this includes our match and the monies that's come from the state, $2.18 million on that school project. I talked with Angie Knight the other day, and the General Assembly is getting ready to issue new school building funds that have 0% match. But unfortunately, we can't claw back. But, you know, that's food for new projects that the county would not have to. And I think the school systems can get up to like $30 million on those funds. So anyway, that's just food for thought for later. On your budget, you'll see that I've highlighted some of the line items or some of the departments that seem to be running a little ahead of schedule, but it's all explainable. The governing bodies are in the long hair, but I posted all of the funds that we spent in December out of the ARCA, any out of that that could be transferred in, you'll see a budget amendment. We need to make some amendments for staffing, the dental chair that you approved with the Board of Health, some truck repairs for sanitation that were related to the lightning strike on the new truck, which we got insurance reimbursement on. And then you'll notice on the senior center, Lorna came in and will have a budget amendment next month to pull in her main funding. So a lot of exciting things. The county is standing at 48% left in the budget. Right now, they should be at 42%, so we're in good shape on the budget as well. Any questions? You'll also notice in your packet just the hard copies of the two budget amendments that you approved via pulling. You'll deal with that here in just a few minutes. And then you'll also see budget amendment number 12 that I'm bringing to bring in some additional revenues and expenditures in the jail. They're doing a lot more commissary accounts. Bring in the dental chair, making the changes in emergency management salaries. Sanitation repairs on the truck, and then to pull in the revenue replacement funds that the board approved in December. So that'll be a total coming into the general fund of $353,500, and all of it is covered with revenue, not fund balance. Nice blessing. So I would just leave that budget amendment approved by the board.
Number 12. I entertain a motion to approve motion amendment number 12 of $353,500. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Just a few informational things that I'll go through real quickly. You'll find in your packet a letter from Josh Stone, the Attorney General, thanking Grand County for participating in the 555 Committee. And he stated that the 555 Committee played a pivotal role in negotiating one of the best MOAs or Memorandums of Agreements in the nation. So he's very proud of the work that the committee and I'm very proud of that Grand County was able to sit at the table to help get that negotiated. We still don't have word as to when that funding will come down yet, but I'm guessing it'll be this coming spring. You'll also see over the packet from Vaya Health. It's their quarterly financial report for December 31st, 2021. They have roughly about $10 million, or I'm sorry, $13 million in spendable funds above and beyond what's restricted. And then you'll also see some demographic information that you can look at at your leisure as to what Vaya is doing. And I know the commissioner was very active, Attorney Cowan was very active on that board as well.
They are. We have additional counties brought in to Vaya currently. And we are struggling in this county, and I am hearing about it and I'm talking to Vaya about it. We are having difficulty getting staffing here, Jay, and it's probably the same in many counties. But it's a serious trouble here, but they are really working hard to try to get folk in here.
One other, two other items. The first is related to our audit. It is almost complete. I've been pushing very hard on our auditors to get it finished. I had everything submitted to them, I think around Thanksgiving. But they have had, they've suffered the same experience as we are suffering with staff turnover and COVID. COVID hit their office about the same time it hit our finance and admin office. So they have presented me with an amendment to the contract. That's just basically to say that same fee, just extending the time period. They have promised me a draft by the end of the week, this week. But just FYI, just to give you a perspective of what the state is experiencing with county and municipal audits, as of last week. Now, all the audits were due the end of December, okay? As of last week, only 24 out of 100 counties have been able to submit their audits. And it's basically the same issues and problems. But I will need the board to approve the amendment to the audit just to say that, you know, we're outside of the December 31st window, just so that I can, they can send this back to local government commission.
I will entertain a motion to approve that extension. Is there a second? All in favor?
And one more thing, in relation to the audits, Gatsby has totally changed our world again in how we report on different types of restricted funding. And so they've changed how we report on our representative payee funds with DSS. So as part of changing in that, changing that system, we will go back to the old way that we used to of where finance will cut all of those checks on behalf of the red payees. It'll be more work in the finance office because there's quite a few accounts. I have a signature card because I want to change how the signatures are on the bank account that if the board, if the members of the board could just come by sometime this week or next just to sign off on that. And then I just want to make a note that in spite of COVID and short staffing, I'm proud to say that the finance department was able to meet every state and federal deadline that's due on January 31st. But I'm really anxious that we, you know, we got our staff back in the office and I'm anxious to have an additional staff person at some point in the near future. And I'll be thankful we met on deadlines. And that's all I've got.
Board?
Thank you, Mr. Colonel, for that hard work on that 555 Committee. That, I think that shows your ability. And I'm very grateful that you were able to be with that committee. I think your efforts really helped. Thank you very much.
We appreciate it, and we appreciate you approving the general fund.
I'm thankful for a board that supports the sound of the management.
To its best level. Board, we have, we have a gentleman here who, Brian Stevens. Would we be able to order to go into close and, or do we need to go through everything and then go into close?
You should go through these rather quickly.
Okay. Are you okay?
He can go first and close then.
Just want to make sure you're okay. All right.
So yeah, we'll start the discussion items. We have a quote, and I need to probably get with the town. Should I probably not get with the town just to make sure they're good with that? I don't know if that's part on, with that fence, is that the exact power? These trees out here behind this building is in such a tight area. I'm not worried so much about the little buildings, but you've got trees that are right next to their fence. And we have a curb with asphalt there. And they're going to continue to grow and spread and tear that up. We're looking at taking those eight trees down out of here. We've got to go over $2,000. But I'd like to talk to make sure that with town. And I wanted Chair Eller, when he came, to show him out there the day that, I think you had to go, you had an appointment somewhere you weren't in town before. I wanted a chance to let you look at it yesterday, Friday, or whatever day it was. But anyway, I need to try to get to the town. I'd like to talk to them just to make sure there's no problems there, too. But we'd really like to let you take those out. It's going to just going to tear the road up and burn the fence, too.
Rode the power pole with the law.
Yeah, there's, we had, Harold did a great job. I had him clean all, and brush all that out under there, but I didn't want him cutting trees. But it looks really good.
I really need to work on this.
So anyway, when you get a chance, if anybody wants to take a look at it, I think it's just going to continue to grow and tear some stuff up. So I'll verify that. We may just poll the board after I talk to the town. Then you have the next item is the releases and discoveries. Releases of $54,656.06 and discoveries of $131.91. Action unit most approved.
Is there a second? All in favor? Approved.
Approve to make EDC a 501(c)(3).
Is there a second? All in favor?
We already kind of did the force plan, unless there's anything else you guys want to go over.
I think once I get this email sent out to everybody that we're probably going to need to schedule a meeting and sit down and talk about what our options are. It's going to be a challenge. Wouldn't you say so, Jacob?
Oh, yeah.
We may actually have to honor a consultant to help us.
Okay.
If y'all are okay with that.
All right, good. We'll move on. Surplus two, 2016 Nissan Pathfinder from Transit Value Funds Credit to Transit.
They're running two vehicles.
And I think it's in your packet what the value is by the Kelly Blue Book. And that's what, you know, she kind of wants to pause it back in hers, which the state will turn around and give us, you know, $100,000 worth of vehicles for 17, so.
A super high number. What is that, $170,000?
I think we're already using.
What's your approval?
Second all in favor.
Approval poll for EMS employees regulated by Brian Stevens.
Most approved.
We have a motion, a second all favor unanimous.
Approval poll for sanitation employees, January 25th.
Most approved.
All in favor? Thank you. Unanimous.
Approval of the CSBG funding packet for four square.
Most approved.
All in favor? Thank you. Unanimous.
Approved, approved poll for budget amendment 10 and 11, senior and sheriff grant, January 28th.
We have a motion, a second all favor. Unanimous.
Approved poll for copier lease with Toshiba, January 28th.
That's for the senior clear, right?
It's for all of us.
Yeah, it's, it's a new contract.
Most approved.
We have a second. Motion, a second all in favor. Unanimous.
Appoint Ms. Adrian Nouns to the, I think that's Southwest child.
Most approved.
Have a second? Thank you, all in favor.
Appoint library board members. You should have some nominees included in your package.
Who do you want here?
Anybody I recommend would be fine.
Anybody on the? Where's the list?
That'd be Carol Garland, Rowan Gordon, Carla Smith, and Joy Stewart. Or a commissioner.
Say that again.
Carol Garland, Rowan Gordon, Carla Smith, or Joy Stewart, or one of the commissioners.
Is Joy, is that Daniel?
Towards the back there.
How many, how many?
Is this your advice that for, um, right hand?
Joy would be good.
I'm trying. If you want to.
Your motion for either of these folks?
I have a motion for Joy.
Yeah, she's interested in it.
All right, is there a second for Joy Stewart?
Yep.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. We appreciate all you do.
Approved poll instructing Attorney Cowan to consult with another attorney.
Most approved.
All in favor? Unanimous.
That's it. We closed this case.
Okay, there's a motion to go into closed session, G S 143. 318,135,6 privilege, we're compelled to have a mandatory white privilege. First sale in contracts.
Roger. Five minute break.
Second? All in favor?
Minimum five minute break.
In there, right, in there.